Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, November 18th, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. Once you are announced, please give your name and neighborhood for the record and you will be given five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Bob Kress. Is Bob Kress with us? I see the name. Bob Kress? I see the name, although I don't. Okay, maybe we can try to come back to him. If you all mute him, we'll try to come back to him. That takes us to our next speaker, which is Aikahana Halmaquina.
Greetings of peace, light and love. My title is Aikahana Halmaquina, the grand Inca of the Aroquois Confederacy and Aboriginal American people. Yesterday, we had the opportunity to speak with a few of city council members and to introduce the Aroquois Confederacy with a lengthier time, more than three minutes. And it became clear to me that we weren't being understood. We were being assumed to be Native Americans, that which we are not and never claimed to be. I purposely introduced myself with my title and my identity attached. I am an Aboriginal American. My ancestors have been in the Americas since time immemorial. We are being mistaken for colored, Negro, Blacks, Afro-American, African-American. We, unlike our grandparents, know how to make the connection. We now have, thanks to the internet and other reliable accessible records, have made the connection via how the Library of Congress, their records, also the access to the journals left behind by the explorers who came to the Americas seeking refuge, fleeing from tyranny. And our purpose for being here consistently and adamantly is to make sure that we are not forgotten and we are not assimilated into a system, knowing that we do not have to participate in our own demise, knowing that we don't have to sit back and be second class anything. We made the conscious choice to form our own nation and to revitalize our culture, our heritage, our traditions, rightfully so. So it is a great honor that I take up this mantle with the support of my grandmother, who is a full-blooded Cherokee. This is our ancestry. This is our heritage. This is our land. And our voices will be heard, we will be acknowledged, and we will be respected in our own land, the Americas, North, South, Central, and her beautiful islands. We are the Aboriginal American people. We remain united, we remain strong, and we are here to reclaim all that belongs to us, our ancestors, and we will not allow them to sit back idly by why people who came here seeking refuge take over and inflict tyranny upon our people. Those very same people mislabeled Negro, Blacks, and Afro-Americans.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kotakebe. Is Kotakebe with us this morning?
Greetings, greetings, and good morning. How are we doing today? This is Kotakebe, Inca of the Aroquois Confederacy, Aboriginal American people. First of all, I'd like to thank those city council members who did take the time to meet with us. And there are still some things that must be talked about to gain better understanding. So what I'm gonna do is, over the next course, read some excerpts again from the American Declaration on the Right of Indigenous People, to bring some of that understanding of law to the City Council of Pittsburgh, to help remove the ignorance and dimness from the eyes of those who may not know, and to bring some understanding upon our situation. In Article III states that our people, indigenous peoples, that we have the right to self-determination. And by virtue of the right of self-determination, we freely determine our political status and freely pursue our economic, social, and cultural development. This means we have the right to our autonomy. We have the right to do things as our people see fit, and we have the right not to be molested and hindered in the exercise of those rights. For our people have a state in Article V, we have the full and effect and observance of all human rights. And our people have the right to the full enjoyment of all human rights and fundamental freedoms as recognized in the Charter of the United Nations and as recognized in the Charter of the Organizations of American States and as recognized in the Constitution for the United States and in international human rights law. Being that, our people have the collective rights that are indispensable for our existence, well-being, and integral development as peoples. And in that regard, states and municipalities must recognize and respect the right of our peoples to our collective action, to our judicial, social, political, and economic systems or institutions, to our own cultures, to profess and practice our spiritual beliefs, to our own tongues and languages, to our lands, territories, and resources. And states and municipalities shall promote with the full and effective participation of our peoples, the harmonious coexistence of rights, systems, of our communities. With that being said, there's a lot of work to do, ongoing work that must be done between our peoples, so we can have our rights promoted, honored, and respected, just like everyone else upon their arrival or entry into America wants to be honored and respected when they come to our lands. So we just want the same honor and respect, if not a little bit more, upon our lands, which we deserve. This is our land, and we have been genocided and put through the wringers, so to speak, through history by the United States government, private.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mark Whitman.
Morning.
Good morning. Please, please give us your neighborhood for the record, and your time will begin.
My neighborhood is Mount Washington. Good morning, city council members. I am Mark Whitman, the nominator of this structure. I'd like to offer my support of this historic designation for the following reasons. This structure needs protection. This is an irreplaceable structure, a beloved landmark that defines the skyline of Allentown and surrounding neighborhoods. For over 100 years, the generous donations of time, talent, and dollars by generations of parishioners of modest means are entrusted to construct and maintain this magnificent edifice. This beautiful structure should not be cannibalized and discarded. There is broad support. This historic designation is supported by the community, the Allentown CDC, Hilltop Alliance, the St. George Church Preservation Society, Preservation Pittsburgh, Young Preservationist Association, Pittsburgh History and Manhattan Mark's Foundations, and others. The Preservation Society is in contact with over 1,400 supporters that include parishioners, alonies, individuals, and organizations. Many have a longstanding legacy that is tied to this structure. They do not want to see the structure discarded as the owner has proposed. In 1910, the construction of the church was implemented. And heavily funded by parishioners of St. George. Parishioners retained.
Thank you. That'll take us back to Mr. Bob Kress. Okay, I saw him go off of mute, but we can't hear you. Okay, I apologize. I'm not sure what's going on, but we cannot hear Mr. Kress, so we're gonna have to move on. If the technical stuff can be worked out, maybe we'll be able to hear him at the end of the meeting. Seeing no further speakers, that will take us to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. DeVale Chair.
Here.
That member is present.
Thank you. That'll take us to our Finance and Law Committee, which is chaired by myself. We have a number of deferred papers, first paper being Bill 838.
Bill 838, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McCainy and Kielko for Professional Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $11,668.90.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 839.
Bill 839, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman Thomas in Battle, PLLC, for Professional Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $6,985.17.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 840.
Bill 840, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in Favor of Thomas Thompson Haper, Professional Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $5,448.22.
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Bill is recommended. For the record, we've also been joined by Councilman Kraus. 841.
Bill 841, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in Favor of Tremba Kinney Greiner and Kerr for Professional Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $9,044.80.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 859.
Bill 859, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in Favor of Pharrell Risinger and Comber LLC for Professional Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $20,030.40.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 860.
Bill 860, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in Favor of Ira and Mary Ann Richard in the Amount of $95,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas by the plaintiff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 875.
Bill 875, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to Enter Into an Agreement with the American Association of University Women in Order to Conduct a Work Smart Training Program as Part of a Pay Equity Initiative Designed to Reduce the Gender Pay Gap in the City and Further Providing for the Expenditures Under the Term Set Agreement at a Cost Not to Exceed $39,959.
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to acknowledge the two years of volunteer work by gender equity commissioners to do the outreach and bring this program to Pittsburgh and work with the AAUW and around this issue of the pay gap, not just for city employees, but citywide. I'm not probably the best person to brief us all on it. I don't have a full description in front of us, but I just want to acknowledge how hard they've worked to bring the program. I think there's a press conference later today where there'll be better details with the mayor and some gender equity commissioners. So I just want to acknowledge that it was a long time to get us to this point, and I hope the council supports the bill.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 876.
Bill 876, Resolution Amending Resolution 635 of 2019, which authorized the mayor and the chief equity officer to enter into a professional services agreement between the city and the government alliance on race and equity in order to receive training and develop a racial equity toolkit in order to extend the contract for an additional year and add technical assistance for building and implementing a racial equity toolkit and developing an equity lens for each department's budgeting process at a cost not to exceed $61,235, subject to appropriation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Does any discussion? Oh, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 877.
Bill 877, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to Enter Into an Agreement with each party in order to collect and provide de-aggregated data related to a pay equity initiative designed to reduce the gender pay gap in Pittsburgh and further providing for the expenditures under the term of said agreement at a cost not to exceed $10,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 878. And Madam Clerk, could we read bills? I'm just scrolling through, 878, 879, 880, 881, 882, 883, 884, 885, 886, 887, 888. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I have them all. Yes, can we read all those bills together? We're actually gonna need a motion to hold those bills.
Okay. Bill 887.
No, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. I apologize. Read up to 883. We're gonna make a motion to hold all those bills until the final, when we do the final vote for the line items. And so I think that'll be five weeks. And then we'll, and then we'll read the next set of bills. I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Okay, Bill 878, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public's Business of the City and for Meeting the Debt Charges Thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1st, 2021. Bill 879, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City for the 2021 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation Thereof and Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions. Bill 880, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 Through 2026 Capital Improvement Program. Bill 881, Resolution Providing for the Leading of Contracts and for the Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, and Equipment for City Departments and the Maintenance, Repair, Rental, and/or Leasing, Rehabilitation, Renovation, Inspection, or Servicing of City Buildings and Facilities, and for Any Miscellaneous Services in and/or any City Departments, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof for the 2021 Fiscal Year. Bill 882, Resolution Authorizing the City to Participate in Applicable Corporative Purchasing Agreements for Goods, Materials, Equipment, Supplies, Services, Professional Services, or Construction as Authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Corporation Law for the 2021 Fiscal Year. 883, Resolution Authorizing City Council to Approve Intro Departmental Transfers Throughout the 2021 Fiscal Year.
Motion to hold till such time council assembles to take the line item vote. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills will be held. Now, Madam Clerk, if we could read bills 884, 885, 886, and 887 together.
Bill 884, Ordinance Amendment to the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemptions, Section 26301, Levy and Rate on Lands and Buildings by Fixing the Rate of Taxation for 2021. Bill 885, Ordinance Amendment to Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemptions, Section 26302, Payment Options, Discount, and Delinquency Penalties, so as to set the payment, discount, and delinquent dates for the 2021 Fiscal Year. Bill 886, Ordinance Amendment to the Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 245, Earned Income Tax, Section 24503, Declaration and Payment of Taxes, Subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year 2021. Bill Number 887, Ordinance Amendment to Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 246, Home Rule Tax, Section 24603, Declaration and Payment of Taxes, Subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year 2021. Is 888 included?
No.
Okay.
What's the motion, Mr. Chair?
The motion is to hold. Motion is to hold tax, excuse, motion is to hold these bills until the tax budget and citizen participation hearing, which is scheduled for 12/14/2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Bills will be held. Our next bill is 888. This one will also be held with our prior bills until we do the line item vote.
Bill 888, Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2021 pursuant to Check to 170 of the City Code.
A motion to hold till such time council assembles to take its line item vote.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Morning, Councilwoman.
Any opposed? Bill will be held. Let the record reflect, we're also been joined by Councilwoman Smith. Bill 889.
Bill 889, Resolution Authorizing All City Departments in Conjunction with the Department of Finance to Enter Into Facilities Usage Agreements for the Purpose of Permanent Groups and Individuals to Rent City-Owned Facilities for Recreational and Community-Focused Activities During the 2021 Calendar Year. The City Shall Not Charge More Than $10,000 Per Rental Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Thank you. That takes us to our invoices. We do have invoices for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That takes us to, we do not have any departmental transfers. That takes us to our P cards. We need a motion for the P cards.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee, which is chaired by Mr. O'Connor. We have one deferred bill, Bill 145.
Bill 145, Ordinance Amendment, Ordinance Number 36 of 2019, Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Conduct Article III, Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals by Repelling, Chapter 639, and Adding a New Chapter 639, Crocodilian Species and Red-Eared Sliders, Prohibiting the Keeping, Sale, Exchange, Adoption, Exchange, or Transfer of Such Animals in the City.
I would like to motion to hold for eight weeks. The animals also support it, so.
Thank you, Councilman.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held eight weeks. That takes us to our Public Works Committee, chaired by Mr. Coghill. We have one deferred paper, Bill 482.
Bill 482, Resolution Granting unto 1505 East Carson Street, L.P., Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct Maintaining Use of Their Own Costs and Expenses, a New Projecting Sign at 1505 East Carson Street in the 17th Ward, Third Council District.
Motion to approve. A second brief discussion, please.
Discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, thank you, Councilman O'Connor. I mean, Councilman Coghill, could you please also motion for an eight-week hold on, uh, four eighty-two?
Sure, motion to hold number four eighty-two for how long did you say?
Eight weeks, please.
Eight weeks.
Uh, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held eight weeks. Uh, new papers, Bill eight seventy-two.
Bill eight seventy-two. Resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with preliminary engineering phase of the Swan Dell Bridge project construction and provided for the payment of municipal incurred costs thereof not to exceed seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars reimbursable at ninety-five percent and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill eight seventy-three.
Bill eight seventy-three. Resolution granting unto High Six Associates LP. Their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use of their own cost and expense to install two new projecting signs at one forty-six Sixth Street in the second ward, sixth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That's to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Uh, first deferred paper is Bill seven seventy-four.
Bill seven seventy-four. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure on the title eleven of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Gallagher Keeper House located at two thirty-four Dithindridge Street in North Oakland, fourth ward.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Good. Okay, um, so this was held for public hearing on eleven-ten, um, so some about a week ago. And, um, I'm in support, um, so motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Is this in your district, Councilman?
No, 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 if someone, uh.
Believe this is in.
Councilwoman.
This is in my district. The owner is very supportive. She has lived in this house for three generations. It's her grandmother's house and, um, I'm thrilled to support it.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That's a, uh, Bill seventy seventy-five.
Bill seven seventy-five. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure and the title eleven of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Harrian Hill Hopping Station located at forty-five oh one Center Avenue in North Oakland Fifth Ward.
Motion to approve, discussion.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Lavelle, I got, this is in, in your district. Is this, uh, is the owner, um, in support? Do you, are you in support?
For the owner, the, the city of Pittsburgh, we actually.
Yeah, right.
And to the best of my knowledge, we are supportive.
Ask this every day on my way to work at Pitt, uh, so it's nice to, to see that this designation is being put forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all the in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is, that takes us to Bill seven seventy-six.
Bill seven seventy-six. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure on the title eleven of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Saint John Vianney Church located at two twenty-five Allen Street in Allentown, eighteenth ward of the city.
Motion to approve, uh, discussion.
Second.
I'd like to, I'd like to give the.
Hold on, Councilman Wilson, a point of order was brought in. Councilman Burgess?
Given the legal opinion from the law department, um, because, um, according to their opinion, um, we cannot consider this nomination. It would violate the church's constitutional rights under the state of Pennsylvania and the U.S. Constitution. In addition, according to the, uh, legal opinion of the law department, we are prohibited from nominating churches uh, that were either used to be or currently used as religious structures. According to the rules of Roberts, we cannot consider this, um, motion. It has to be a motion to withdraw. I like a ruling on that. The only proper motion that we can discuss this in is a motion to withdraw. Our parliamentarians also on the line.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, point of order. Uh, I'd like to continue with the motion to approve with discussion before, uh, being, uh, interrupted. The ruling or the discussion?
My understanding and, and Madam Clerk, you serve as our parliamentary, correct me if I'm wrong. A point of order was raised. We have to address that before we move forward.
Uh, we did hear the point of order.
But a ruling was asked for the point of order.
So.
Only proper movement. I'm not saying we can't discuss it, but the only proper motion is the motion to withdraw. No other motion, this, this cannot be discussed in any other way.
Hold on, Councilman Burgess, Madam Clerk.
Uh, so council, um, our solicitor is on the line and I think they would be our official parliamentarian, so I believe she would probably want to opine as the official parliamentarian for council.
So I'm just looking through. So, uh, Solicitor Hilton.
Yeah, she's on.
I am on. Good morning. Um, we, you know, we're not, we don't have an encyclopedic knowledge of the Roberts rules, so I'll have to, if you'd like, we're going to need to take a quick look. Um, I don't think our normal parliamentarian is on today, so I, I will need to just take a quick look and, and, and we'll do that right now.
Mr. Chair, while we wait, uh, for, uh, our, uh, law department's, uh, decision, I would also like to ask if they would bring back a, um, decision, if you will, on port, points of order being decided by the chair alone. Okay. Thank you.
Answer that question.
What I can tell from a brief, uh, look at the rules, um, a point of order is decided by the chair and it is decided before further business.
That would be correct.
Then I would ask if the chair would please then permit, uh, approval and discussion.
We can, we can have discussion, although we're still waiting on a ruling from.
You have to get the ruling.
On the point, on the actual point of order of what our approach should be.
That's you, Councilman Lavelle. You get to make the decision. I'm suggesting that the rules, Roberts rules are, that doesn't mean we can't have a conversation. I'm simply saying that we have to have the conversation under the right motion. Given that this, given, I, I can't really discuss it, but given the legal opinion of this being cost unconstitutional, we cannot enter a motion to approve. It must be a motion to withdraw. We have to. There is no other, there is no other way we can discuss it.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And a point of order doesn't provide Mr. Burgess with the only ability to speak to this.
Correct.
There should be no discussion, actually.
So, exactly. So, but you have had discussion.
So I would, I don't have the ability to start muting people. Um, but as of right now, my understanding is none of us is supposed to be talking. We're all supposed to be waiting for Solicitor Hilton to actually come with the ruling.
It's you. You have to make the decision. Mr. Chair, you make that decision first.
Either we'll take the motion to approve and take the vote or not take the vote.
Well, she gets to determine which motion's in order.
I know, but what, what I'm asking for the solicitor to advise on which order is the proper motion to make.
So Councilman Lavelle, we have provided, uh, you know, a legal opinion on the, the underlying issues. It is appropriate, if, if you want to discuss further, our advice would be that it's appropriate for an executive session because it goes to the heart of, of some of the advice we've given.
So with that.
Am I, am I permitted? Uh, because I believe that information provided to law was purposefully and intentionally tailored to bring back an opinion that would be supportive of the councilman's vision and not the reality of the situation.
So with that being said, I would like to either entertain a motion for executive session, so we can indeed discuss this and/or entertain a motion to withdraw.
So, um, uh, man. The, uh, my intent after having discussion with you this morning, uh, is to move the bill today. There are six members that are committed to vote the bill through today. And as a courtesy to you and your professionalism in handling this situation, I would then call for executive session to take place before final vote, so as any member wishing to engage law further, uh, has the ability to do so.
So one, I thank you, um. I just want to be clear about my intent. My intent was this council received a legal opinion a day ago. I believe members should have the opportunity to speak with this solicitor. I have not yet to understand it and then be able to decide how they want to handle this with their full conscience of what we're actually doing. Um, whether we choose to adhere by what the law is, whether we choose to acknowledge what the law says and we choose to challenge it or, or whether we do not care. I just think we need to be clear about what that is, and I'd also like to be clear about how they came to their opinion. Um, so with that, and I thank you, Councilman Kraus, I believe he made a motion to hold for an executive session. Is there a second?
I did not.
Oh, you did not? I apologize.
Not. My, my intent is to move the preliminary vote today and to also then afterwards call for an executive session for members that wish to engage further with the law department. However, I would caution that I don't believe the law department, and I am not compromising our law department in any way, was provided full substantive and accurate information to deliver the opinion that was delivered. I've been in this process for two years now. Councilman Burgess is pulling a Hail Mary eleventh hour pass to stop this. Uh, so I believe I have further knowledge that would ultimately influence what law may or may not feel about it, but I did not call for the law, uh, opinion. So I have the votes today. I want to take the preliminary vote today and I will also, as a courtesy to you and your professionalism and the conversation we had today, call to hold, uh, not to hold, but to host an executive session for members who wish to engage further with law before we take the final vote. I believe that satisfies, uh, all interests.
So we're having an interrogatory at the moment. Can you immediately, Councilman Kraus, provide the solicitor's office with whatever additional information you have so that they can be prepared by, we really need to have it by Friday to have an executive session on this matter?
I'm happy to do so. I commit that to you.
Mr. Chair, the first thing that has to happen is you have to rule on my motion for the move, that the motion to approve is out of order, that the appropriate motion is the motion to withdraw. That's the first thing that has to happen.
So.
Anything else?
So I am going to allow for the motion to approve and with discussion to occur.
Okay.
Um, I saw Madam President, your hand is up.
Yeah, I just, I feel like this is a terrible situation to put counsel in.
I, I apologize, Mr. Chair, but the, the, um, Chair of the Committee, uh, referenced to me when he motioned to approve.
Correct. I, I thought you were done.
I'm not.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
For, I apologize.
Yeah, thank you. So it is a difficult session, uh, decision that one member is choosing to place counsel in. Um, and, uh, it is unfortunate. I have not been communicated to by, uh, this member in any way, shape or form, not verbally, not by phone, not by email, not by, uh, writing, uh, not even, uh, a phone call or digital communication. All of this has been done behind my back uh, and done with the intent to purposefully scuttle, uh, the nomination of this amazing, uh, building that is paramount uh, to the interests of the Allentown neighborhood. I'm sorry, Mr. Burgess, are you gonna, great, I'd like you to hear this. Um, and, um, and so, um, uh, the, the way by which, uh, the councilman is doing this is no longer a, uh, a point of conversation because there are six members today. I thank you very much for your ongoing support and understanding the importance of this structure to the neighborhood of Allentown, uh, and why they are fighting so very hard to preserve, uh, this building. And I appreciate that when it is said and done today, uh, six members will vote to pass this, uh, preliminarily today. Um, the president of the, um, Saint John Vianney Historical Society was trying to get on this morning, uh, to place comment in, in public, uh, but unfortunately was not able to, uh, to do so. Uh, I guess a communication glitch. So, um, I did want to be able to enter his comments in, um, as the head of the Saint John Vianney, uh, Historical Society, so. He begins by saying, good morning, council members. My name is Bob Kress. I'm the president of the Saint George Preservation Society. I'm commenting in support of the historic designation of the Saint John Vianney Church. For almost a century, for almost a century, the structure has been known as Saint George Church. Only in the decade before it was closed for worship, it was renamed Saint John Vianney Church. Our Preservation Society is a local grassroots nonprofit that was founded by a large group of parishioners who have a longstanding and multi-generational legacy that is tied to this neighborhood and to the structure. We offer our support of historic designation for the following reasons. The HRC has found that it meets four of the criteria in title eleven as the historic structure. This application was cleared by our city law department, and I'll repeat that. This application was cleared by our city law department. This structure was nominated as an historic structure versus a religious structure because title eleven indicates that for it to be defined as a religious structure, it needs to be used as a place of religious worship. The intent, the owner has, uh, no intention of using this structure for religious worship. A few years ago, the diocese had proposed to demolish the church and had no plans to re, and had plans to reuse the stained glass windows which, uh, which are in the church. The owner issued a decree indicating that the church, and I quote, "is closed for worship and relegated to profane but not sorbed use." And that is coming from the diocese. I'll repeat that. The church is closed for worship and relegated to profane but not sorbed use. A closing mass was celebrated. When parishioners left the church, it was secured with chains and padlocks to keep them out. Subsequently, the windows were boarded up and security met, uh, screens replaced over entrances. Parishioners have been denied any access to the church. This spring, under the direction of the owner, an abatement contractor began weeks of work for re, to prepare for the removal of the stained glass windows, the religious artifacts and the pews. Once the abatement was completed, the tabernacle, the altar furnishings, statues and all religious artifacts were removed. Work to dismantle the church has started. The sound system was removed, as was the ornate sacristy casework. The stained glass windows would have been removed over the summer, but the historic nomination caused the work to be suspended. If not for this nomination, the neighborhood would now be left with an empty, cannibalized, windowless shell instead of a beloved landmark. Under Title XI, this historic designation does not restrict any further uses by owners. It only regulates exterior modifications and demolitions. And then it's signed Bob Kress, the president of the St. John Vianney Historic Society. And then I'd also like to be able to offer up, I don't believe this gentleman was able to, uh, to get in to offer comment as well too. If he did, uh, please stop me. But this is from Mark Whitman, who is the nominator of the structure. Did he speak today? Thank you very much. So, um, the, uh, in support of the, um, of the nomination, we have the Hilltop Alliance. We have the Allentown Community Development Corporation. We clearly have myself. Uh, we have the, uh, St. John Vianney Historical Preservation Society and numerous, uh, numerous constituency throughout the Allentown neighborhood to preserve this historic landmark. So I will end my comments with that. Uh, I will call for the vote today and out of respect, I will, um, after that, the vote is taken and we pass this with a preliminary approval. I will then, um, ask for the chair's indulgence to call for an executive session for members who wish to engage in a factual conversation with our Law Department around the nomination of this, uh, of this historic St. John Vianney Church. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your indulgence.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I mean, Madam President.
Thank you, Ma, uh, Mr. Chair. So as I said, I, I think this is a difficult situation, terrible situation to put council members in. And I believe that members should do what they want to do for the most part in their districts. However, when, um, we obtained the information from the Law Department, we can't just ignore that. And I know a lot of you have voted against your oath of office. You have voted against things that you believed and you're passionate about. I've not done that. I, I, I've taken it seriously. And so I, I want to make sure that what I'm doing is, is okay. And, um, and I want to be supportive at the same time. I want to be supportive of Councilman Kraus. I think that we should have held this, worked with the diocese. I mean, many of us have, um, good relationships there. We could have worked with the diocese. Repurposed this building for something that the community really wants. We were able in our district to repurpose all of our closed churches and schools. Um, and they're benefiting the community now. And so I think that should have been the, the goal, but I think that Councilman Kraus has, um, concerns about the structure of the building and the, the integrity of the building as, as you're running through this process. But we've had a good working relationship with the diocese. I wish that that's, that was the route we're taking, we were taking. Since we're not, I'd like to know from the Solicitor, what are we violating? Are we violating our oath of office or reviving the constitution in your opinion? Um, and with the facts that you have today, um, could you answer that question?
Councilwoman, that's, really does go to the heart again of the opinion that we gave. And, and the advice that we have given counsel. We, I would disagree that we've made a determination as to the constitutionality or not with respect to the church. But we have, you know, again, raised issues that are appropriate to be discussed in the executive session that it looks like it's being scheduled.
It's not scheduled yet. Um, and so today, now we have to make a decision. I just want council members to know what they're, what they're doing. And I want us to be clear about what we're doing. And I, that's for that reason alone, I wish that we would take the time to schedule the, um, the briefing first and, and the meeting with, uh, with the Law Department first.
But I also. That is advisable.
I think it is too. And, and I think that anything else other than that is putting counsel in a very difficult and unfortunate situation. I don't appreciate that we're put in this situation. I don't think that, um, members should ask for an opinion from the Law Department, in something that, without talking to the member, without having a full, um, conversation with the member of that area. I think that that should have been a courtesy, courtesy call, but I also understand that, um, members want to make sure we're doing what's right, uh, too. So I, I don't know the intention behind all this. I know what we have before us. And what we have before us is information from the Law Department that I think that we should adhere to, and I think that we should call for the, for the session first, for the briefing first, but, and if we don't, then I'll just abstain today.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, are you done, Madam President?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Councilman Burgess.
So, um, first, um, the illustrative Councilman Kraus suggested that I had given false information or lied to the Law Department. So before I begin, I would like to ask him to clarify exactly what lie or what false information I gave the Law Department.
Thank you for turning that over to me, Councilman, and I won't permit you to put words in my mouth. I said not complete nor completely accurate information was given. Thank you very much.
Which information is inaccurate or?
Councilman, I don't wish to, uh, to enter into an interrogatory with you. I do not believe that you gave full, complete information on the nomination because you have not been engaged in this process so much as a moment. I've been in this process for two years now. You have absolutely no vested interest in this at all whatsoever. You have every right to vote against this. You do not have the right in a Hail Mary pass to blow it up in the eleventh hour. I'm done, Councilor, Mr. Chair. I don't wish to do interrogatory.
So, let's go in order. As you see, by his own ambition, Mr. Kraus does not want to chat, talk with me. He has.
Councilman, you had every opportunity to reach out to speak to me. You went behind my back and went to members, called members, asked them to vote against this, went to the Law Department, asked a legal opinion. Show me one moment where you reached out to me, spoke to me, sent an email to me, phoned me in any way, shape or form. Try to communicate with me in a substantive or any manner whatsoever regarding this. Why did you go behind my back and try to blow it up in the eleventh hour?
Like you said, you don't want to have an interrogative. I'm welcome to have.
Answer the question, Councilman.
So which one do you want? You want to talk or not? Whichever one we can do. So let's go forward. For the last 12 years, I have been clear as a pastor. As for the last 36 years, I have been the pastor of the Nazarene Baptist Church. I have served as my denomination's representative to the Board of Delegates of Christian Associates. I have represented my denomination at various parts. I am a clergy person. I have made it clear to anyone who will hear me at every moment that I believe that the designation of historical structures was wrong. I have a 12-year history of that. It doesn't matter to me where it's at. In fact, we are elected by district, but we represent, we represent the city as a whole. Not one of us is in charge. The council decides. So that's number one. Two, I spoke publicly about this, um, before, that when this came up, I've said that I was going to be against it. So let's talk about, um, I think that all of the things that Mr. Kraus has said passionately, and wanting to preserve the church are heartfelt and accurate. Unfortunately, they're also illegal. What I asked the Law Department was my belief was that Barbara Connor, whose son now, um, sits on our council, uh, wrote legislation specifically to eliminate this for McCurry. When Saint Nicholas was designated, he specifically wrote into the code that we cannot designate historic structures. It was to prevent any church synagogue or temple from being nominated. Now, there was, because the Historic Review Commission and Planning Commission didn't like it. They didn't like it when it was passed by a previous council. They ignored it by saying that the structure had currently, had to be currently used for worship. That was never true then. Barbara Connor's old words were explicit. He didn't believe that anything owned by the church should be nominated. So then I asked, which is my right to do as a councilperson of the city, to ask for a legal opinion from the use clause because the argument became that it had to be currently being used. Well, according to the dictionary definition of the word used, prior use because there is no qualifier. If it had ever been used, it would fit the definition. It was being used by now. It has fit the definition. Uh, Mr. Kraus has ignored the Law Department's opinion that specifically states, first of all, that no religious structure should be nominated, period. So that the Historic Review Commission and the Planning Commission made an error in sending this legislation in front of us. This should not be in front of us. We are forbidden for doing this. The city code specifically states no religious structures can be nominated without the owner's consent. The Law Department now has clarified that. Second of all, the nominators are part of a lawsuit, not a lawsuit, but a internal church process to open the church back up. That, that appeal is at the Supreme Court of Rome. The Law Department has also stated that we should not be involved in inner church disputes. That is not our role by entering this, and the designator clearly states that's your role to, um, to, to make the church extort, um, in lieu of the decision by the Pope. We should at the minimum wait until the Pope makes his decision. This is actually not a Hail Mary pass. This issue actually is over. Let me explain to you why it's over. If this council decides to nominate this church, it really won't matter. The, the Catholic Church Law Department will immediately go to court to protest this ruling. Because the Law Department has now stated on the record that religious structures cannot be, um, nominated, they will then join the side, instead of defending this, they will not be able to defend it. They will join the side of the church in, no matter what you do. This is now over. This structure cannot, will not ever be historic. So that's number one, won't be nominated. So if the church, if the council wants to do this, the, the, the Law Department has already told you that you can't do it, so they will side with the church and it will be removed. But I want to make a larger argument. And this is what's important to me. Right now, in the United States, we have a president who doesn't believe in the rule of law. We have, uh, who is using his position and his power to snarl at the rule of law. We have all these frivolous lawsuits, um, trying to overturn a rightful election because they don't like the rule of law. Now, the Law Department has told us now specifically what the law is. A, we cannot nominate religious structures without the consent of the church. There is no wiggle room in this. They say you can't do it, period. Unfortunately, that means that, not unfortunately, but as I've been saying for many years, that means that religious churches, churches, synagogues, temples, exactly as, um, the late, uh, Councilman and eventually Mayor Connor intended it to be, that we cannot nominate these structures. But we also get to make a statement today. Are we a council that believes in the rule of law? Or are we petulant children, prima donnas, who want our ways no matter what? See, what my experience has been, when the rule of law does not rule, minorities, particularly, I'm a black man, when the law is no longer appears, when we can just say, I don't like this law. This, 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 this conflicts with my privilege. I'm in charge. I know better than the law. In my experience, in my history, black people and minority people are always hurt. The rich and the powerful and the well-connected, when privilege is the reason that we act. Now, council, I'm going to abstain. I suggest to you, regardless of your vote, you should abstain from this. There are three things that I'm going to suggest. We are absolutely on the brink of violating the church constitutional rights, both by the state and by the government and by the federal government. You will be in risk of violating your oath of office. You've heard this stuff about, you know, um, abuse of power. Well, now you're seeing it live and in the flesh. We have a law opinion saying that we cannot do this. The city can not do this. A former councilmen and a former council have said, you can not do this. So we can't do it. We may want to do it. We may like Mr. Kraus and want to support him. Doesn't matter. You can't do this. If you do this, you are saying that the rule of law doesn't count, that we are not ruled by law. We're simply a collection of, of thugs who decide that we will on a whim do that that we want because power and privilege makes right instead of law. And I do not want to be a member of council, of a council who does not uphold the rule of law. Now, there is enough, I believe we should not have this vote today. I agree with Councilwoman Smith. I think many of you do not realize, no matter, because of your friendship and because Mr. Kraus' denial of reality, perhaps you don't realize the significance of what your vote will mean today. But I warn you, if you vote for this, you will be making a statement against the rule of law and a thug rule in this city. It is unfortunate. It is not. It is unfortunate that we're in this position. I'm sorry, Mr. Kraus, that I have done the research. I am sorry that my research has found correct. I'm sorry that you and I do not have a good relationship. And I do not feel comfortable talking to you since you are in the present behind legal actions to harm me. I do not feel comfortable talking to you because you're actively in various legal proceedings trying to harm me. So you're right. I do not talk to you for that reason. I don't, I do not, I do not wish you ill. However, I am, I am the representative of the city of Pittsburgh, not just of the ninth council district. When I put the avenues of hope in Bell, in Bell Silver, which is in your district, I didn't talk to you then either. But I did that because Bell Silver deserves resources. And so I am, I represent the entire city, not just the ninth council district. And I am a clergy person. And so when the council decides to do something unconstitutional, against the rule of law, I can't help but speak up and speak out. So I urge council at the minimum, you should do one of two things. You should either hold this for executive session because I'm telling you, if you vote for this, I don't know that you want to make this statement that you are, you are for violating the constitutional rights of a church and you're for violating the city code, the city charter, the Robert Rules of Order and the, and the rules of council. You will be doing all these things with an affirmative vote. And of that, there is no question, notice, there is no debate on my issues. Everything I told you is exactly right. Now, he can go back to before there was a legal opinion and say all those things that he said, which are true. Unfortunately, this present legal opinion, which is now public, strikes all that out. We cannot in any way designate this church. It is illegal for us to do this. It is illegal for us to do this, is against the code, and it is saying to our city that we are not for the rule of law. We are simply privileged and we do what we want to do based on friendship and relationships instead of the law and what's best for the city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you. Uh, there was a lot going on there. I just, I I know I was called on a couple of times or the uh just heard my name multiple times. So um with regards to this, I mean, obviously, um, the ref has always uh had his stance on historic designation. Um, I think in some ways, you know, I do agree with uh some some of those arguments that have been made in the past. Um, I think when it comes to this one, and I did read the law uh department opinion. Um, and I know the former mayor was mentioned multiple times, but that was a time when a lot of these organizations had groups that were involved in the neighborhood. They had groups that um, you know, used to be involved. Now we're talking about a church that the diocese basically has abandoned. Um, so I think it's a little bit different. Um, I would also say in speaking, I I usually don't do this, but in speaking uh as somebody that lived with the man who was the mayor, I would say that he would tell us right now to do what's best for the people of Pittsburgh and the priority of that neighborhood. And what I'm gathering right now is that that neighborhood wants to see this designation, which is why I'm going to vote for it. Um, I would also say that we as a council, we have challenged the law on a number of things. Um, we've challenged it on paid sick leave. We ended up winning. We're challenging it now on rental registration. We're challenging it now in uh gun control. So uh you know, I think there are great points on both sides. Uh, I think at this point, I'm just going to vote for this because the community wants it. And that's who we represent ultimately, the community. And our law department gives us their opinion. Their opinion is not always right and they work for us. So we can basically at the end of the day, support what we truly believe. I think everybody brings up good points, but I just wanted to follow up with the law department's opinion that I saw. You know, my father listed in there and and it was mentioned before. So it's all I wanted to say, and that's where my stance would be. Uh, but I want to thank everybody for this dialogue. I think it's good that we talk about historic preservation and changes that the rev has mentioned in the past that might need to be done to our system. But at this point, given the information, I'm going to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Right, I also just want to say that I'm um also personally um in favor today. And I'll be voting yes on the provisional vote to support the nomination. It was positively supported by Planning Commission and by the Historic Review Commission, both of which are also advised by our same law department and move forward with their votes and voted affirmatively. Um, and I look forward to the executive session discussion so that we can, with our law department in interrogative, not today, um, have discussions about where their advice is coming from, why they framed it this way and and maybe dig into these details, but I'm voting yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for first round? Seeing none, I'll I'll quickly weigh in. Um, just for the record, I did speak with Councilman Kraus a week ago. Um, I told him that I would be supportive of this vote. However, I do believe as new information comes in, it's my job to take all of it into consideration. And a legal opinion did come in. I have not had a chance to have that conversation with our law department, but I want to have that opportunity to fully understand what the ramifications of my vote in favor or against are and why their legal opinion was framed the way it was, which is why I then asked to not do this today, but to actually wait for the executive session. Um, so I'm undecided as to what my final vote will be at this moment in time. I will abstain today so that I can indeed have the conversation with our law department to better understand their opinion on what our actions are and should be um so that I can then vote with a full conscience um and full understanding of what my vote actually means. Um, so that's all I have to say for that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will we please have a roll call vote?
Reverend Burgess.
Abstain.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Abstain.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. The Bell Chair. I'm sorry.
Abstain.
Eyes six, three abstentions.
That means it does have a affirmative recommendation. Um, that will move us on to.
Mr. Chair, may I at this time then call to ho- host an executive session this week uh before Friday?
Yes.
Take this into Monday. So motion to hold executive schedule, motion to work with the clerk to schedule executive session before Friday.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Repose. An executive session will be scheduled. Thank you all. Um, I got to get my place again. Okay, that takes us to new papers. Um, first paper is Bill eight ninety.
Bill eight ninety, resolution for the amending resolution number eight sixty-three of twenty eighteen, effective January first, twenty nineteen, as amended. Resolution adopting and approving the twenty nineteen capital budget and the twenty nineteen CDVG program, the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four capital improvement program by increasing CDVG block grant line items by three million one hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars to reflect the allocation of federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security act funding and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Uh, is there someone from the um, is there some from the administration that can speak to this? On the line? Uh, let me see here. Is possibly Laura Jakowski on the line? Oh, here goes Dave Hudson.
Hey.
Dave.
David Hutchinson, sure.
Councilman.
Sure, David Hutchinson, Assistant Director in the Office of Management and Budget. Um, apologies, I'm calling from my vet's office. I had to drop the dog off. Um, but yeah, this is our third round of um money from HUD for our CDVG program in response to the CARES Act funding.
Thanks. I don't have any, no further comment.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Oh.
Aye.
Ms. Gross, did I miss you?
Apologize. Um, I have, I really don't understand the details of how we're allocating this. Does anyone else, is it my my bad here? Um, our first eight million we gave to the RA. And.
This isn't, I don't believe this is how we're actually going to spend the money. This is simply receiving the money.
Okay, and so we're putting it into, um, if anyone caught it in reading through it, it does look like it's, ew, I'm sorry, I'm reading the text file. And it's so that I'm reading like the full legislation. And it does look like it's being put into the tenant assistant housing stabilization, but it seems to be distributed. So there actually does appear to be allocations. Maybe can can we have uh someone clarify that? I apologize for, I was just slow with my mouse to get to you.
That's okay, I missed, I missed that part.
I think Whitney's on the line.
Yes, good morning. I I can speak to some of that. Um, so when we received information in mid-September, not too long ago, that there was another round of CDVG CD three allocations, this is, this is coming in waves. Um, and this is just HUD says to prevent, prepare for and respond to coronavirus. So it needs to be tied directly to the coronavirus response. Um, the what was determined also through analysis of where demand was greatest and was that there are two areas of great demand and those included emergency rental assistance and then food banks, uh food assistance that could respond most quickly to the need. So the um through discussions, um, the majority of the allocation of three point one million was to the rent, emergency rental assistance, again, based on data collected in terms of the greatest level of need uh across the city. Um, and then the food banks were the were rounded out, um, including four one two food rescue, the Jewish Family and Children's Services and the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. Um, in addition, there was a smaller allocation to the Bryn Mawr development um to improve their HVAC system because you can use funds to, you know, most immediately respond to air quality and um such as an HVAC system. But anyway, the ninety, eighty percent of the funds went towards emergency rental assistance and to food banks.
Excuse me, wait, I I think I still have the floor. Uh, Mr. Finstrom, did you say went to? So have these funds already been expended? Okay, so just in your your recommendation to cancel.
That's correct.
To allocate it this way. So what.
Based on analysis.
Your analysis, you did an analysis. And then, and then you believe this is how we should allocate it based on your analysis.
It was my my analysis alone. We collected information from three one one, sorry, two one one. Um, and yeah, two one one in terms of the calls that had come in. And uh, I think an overwhelming out of fifteen hundred calls that were received, somewhere close to half of those calls were for rental assistance. So based on that and also the level of demand for rental assistance through the existing rental program that was funded with CDVG CD one, um, it was quite enormous demand for rental assistance through that. So those data points pointed to um, you know, trying to respond most quickly to prevent, prepare for and respond to coronavirus.
If I'm not mistaken, you can go straight to the United Way's website and see yourself how many calls are coming in for each category to the two one one line, right? I've done that myself.
That's correct.
Right, so that was the analysis that you did for two one one. Um, so um, I just wanted to clarify that because it did look like under the title of the bill that was just receiving it and I couldn't really figure out what was going on. So in the rental assistance, is this actually the transfer to the RA? For some of it or all of it, like, so I see it like in the in the text of the bill, you know, let's say the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Bryn Mawr for HVAC.
Right.
Right, it also says other affordable preservation.
Yeah, so there's, uh, so just two details. One, the two million dollars to the rental assistance program is building on the one million we had reported to the RA in a previous allocation. So their total program now will have three million dollars for rental assistance. And then Bryn Mawr, I think that specific facility accounts for about ninety-five thousand out of the quarter million. But there are other um affordable housing developments that the RA supports, um, that need similar HVAC work. So that's where the the remainder of that two fifty would go is to other um facilities in a similar situation.
Interesting.
Correct.
And um, so and then four one two, I um, I'm supportive of, of course, food assistance and supportive of affordable housing assistance. Um, but I just want to tell you a very, very short, one-minute story that I've told council members before. In uh one of my neighborhoods, Bloomfield, the the local neighborhood group got its own um pot of money. I think it was only eight thousand dollars, a very small pot of money um to just do cash assistance for neighbors. And um sent out an appeal, people applied for five hundred dollars of cash assistance. Um, and in all sixteen, I think I might have these numbers just slightly wrong, of the residents that applied and received the funds. Every single one of them was in, you know, needed cash assistance for their rent or food because they didn't have wages from a neighborhood business. So the the awards, right, were um anyone from who lived in the neighborhood could apply. But surprisingly, nobody expected this. The organization didn't expect it. I didn't expect it. We're all really strict, you know, kind of impressed that the people who needed cash assistance in the neighborhood needed cash assistance because their neighborhood employer was closed. That really surprised us, right? And I I think that's why yesterday, and I'll be asking OMB later today, when we look at where we've lost revenue, that also means that we have residents who've lost wages when we look at which businesses are closed. And so I know, it seems like I'm putting a really fine point on this, but I'm just, I think it's, it's, it's worth exploring a little bit. Um, so for example, let's say everyone would give cash assistance to who lives, happens to live in Bloomfield, get some of this money. If those employers permanently close, then those people are never going to get their wages back, right? And so I just want to belabor that point a little bit. I'll stop talking about it right now. I just want to explore it a little bit to see if maybe there's something better we could be doing. While I I'm totally supportive of people getting cash assistance and helping them feed themselves or their children, stay in their apartments or living situations so that they're not out on the streets or in a different situation that makes them more vulnerable to COVID. I also want to explore if maybe there's something here that we're missing. Um, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you for for being there to answer my questions. Um, and thank you.
I can't speak to direct.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson, for calling in from your car. And I hope your pet is okay.
Just a point of clarification I feel I do need to make though with these funds. And then maybe some other pot of CARES Act funds, maybe it's the paycheck protection program, I'm not sure. But with the CDVG fu- funds, CARES Act funds, we cannot provide direct cash payment assistance. Just want to make sure that's absolutely clear.
Sorry, I think I'm reading something here and maybe there's just a slight vocabulary difference. So you can explain it to me. I was done, but since you said that, what is tenant assistance housing stabilization?
So one of the catches with the CDVG CARES Act funds is that you cannot actually provide, this is a big HUD federal regulation. You cannot provide direct assistance to a person. So you actually, the funds in a roundabout way have to go towards the landlord to assist with those payments. Jessica's on the line if she wants to.
That's fine, I mean, I I'm comfortable with that and I I don't think I need that to be anymore explained. Like, we do this all the time, right? When we have a program at the local government level, we can have conditions on that program, right? So you have weatherization programs. We'll fix your windows to bring down your energy costs, but we require you pass that through to your renter. Something like that, right? I mean, cities do this all over the place. So I assume it's something like that. Um, Ms. Perry.
Correct. So our housing stabilization program, um, just real quickly, it is a program where people call um two one one and they get referred to one of our providers who meet with them really to make sure that that their household can be stabilized. Uh, you know, through through this economic crisis. Um, and it does pay for for rent directly to the landlord, utilities, security deposits, things like that. Uh, it does not pay cash to the to the person itself, but it does enable them to continue to rent. It goes up to um three months um or three thousand dollars per household. And to date, we have helped about one thousand households. Um, and the program is is still going strong, it's still very much needed. Um, and and it provides, you know, as much flexibility as it can to to help the households right now.
Great, okay, I will stop talking, but now I'm curious to know kind of which landlords are being supportive because I also think it behooves all of us to support our local landlords. Um, and um so that they don't have, so that they continue to have revenue, but also so that they don't sell their properties because that's what we have. I I firmly believe, some people disagree, that our naturally occurring affordable housing is a really important portion of our housing stock um in the city, even though we want it co-compliance and a host of other issues. I'd rather have it locally controlled than controlled by some bank who doesn't care about us or some big LLC who's just speculating on our neighborhoods. So different topics, not for today. Appreciate your for being there, thank you. I'm done, Mr. Chair. I'm done, Mr. Chair. I'm going to stop now.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill, get my place, eight ninety-one.
Bill eight ninety-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the office of management and budget. To enter into an agreement with agencies to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance. And housing relocation and stabilization services and or data collection activities. As associated with the twenty twenty emergency solutions grant, funds at a cost not to exceed one million, two hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. And twenty twenty housing opportunities for persons with AIDS funds at a cost not to exceed one million, one hundred forty thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Recommended. That takes us to our final committee for today, intergovernmental affairs committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one deferred paper, Bill six thirty-five.
Bill six thirty-five, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for fifteen oh one Penn Avenue.
You know, ironically, that's the same one that has a knock on its planning commission. It's actually going to its, uh, community. Second or third community presentation in the strip district just this week. So I don't know how many weeks it's going to be on motion to hold, four weeks probably.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 It will be held for a week. Um, that does exhaust our agenda, which takes us to our meeting announcements. Um, budget hearings will begin this afternoon at one thirty PM with the office of management and budget. Budget hearings will continue tomorrow, Thursday, November nineteenth, with the department of public safety at ten AM. And the department of permit, license and inspections at one thirty PM. All budget hearings will be held virtually and streamed live via the city's channel and city channel Pittsburgh on YouTube, excuse me. Council will also hold a briefing on Friday, November twentieth with sessions at one PM and one forty-five with the URA. Relative to the twenty twenty-one housing opportunity fund annual allocation plan. Also due to the Thanksgiving holiday next week, council will hold both our regular and standing committee meetings on Wednesday. On Monday, excuse me, uh, November twenty-third at ten AM and one thirty PM respectively. If you'd like to register to speak at the regular and standing committee meetings, please call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. By nine AM Monday for the regular meeting and by twelve thirty PM for the standing committees. May also email comments to city clerk's office at Pittsburgh PA dot gov. Is there any further comments from members?
Mr. Chair.
Burgess.
I'll be very, I'll, I'll be brief. As the old person of council, having been here the longest, um, I, I would. And some of you, as you know, Bobby being here the youngest, I would simply caution you. When you do not respect the former decisions of council. I think you want to tread down that road very, very, very carefully. When you decide that you do not want to obey, listen, or adhere to further previous decisions on council. Because it's not convenient for you. You want to be very careful to go down that road. Because once we begin to decide, we are not a city by the rule of law. Then other bad things, we lose our moral authority. We may win, we, someone may win an issue today. But the real power of council is not our vote. It's on our ethical and moral. Judgment of representing the city and doing what's right. And when we decide to consciously, with our eyes open, do that which is wrong, we lose our moral authority. We decide to deny previous councils their authority and ignore what they have done, we lose our moral authority. I'm not, I, I'm not, I, I, I'm just telling you as the person who's been here long enough. If you want council to become irrelevant, continue down this path. We will become irrelevant because the people will lose confidence in us. Be very careful. A lot of things I say. This, I'm saying from my heart. You should be very careful, extraordinarily careful. Down the road, we are now treading. It is very dangerous for our city. It is very dangerous for our council.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further announcements or comments from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.